You have to first off acknowledge that you do not want to allow those generational things to continue, whether it's through things through alcoholism or drug abuse. It could be something where you have been raised your entire life by hearing your parents use swear words, or just raise their voice, or there's different things where it may have impacted you away and then you become accustomed to it. So you normalized it. But again, those are things that I feel have more subtle generational things. You have to identify that that didn't work well for you and be willing to figure out how you are going to stop it.
Welcome to an inspirational people interview on the Share Life Podcast. I'm Jason Scott Montoya. Today I'm speaking with my neighbor Alvin Hicks. Alvin, say hello.
Hey, everyone. Thanks, Jason.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for joining us, sharing your life with us. My guest, Alvin, he is a dedicated advocate and city councilman for Sugar Hill, Georgia. Alvin truly understands the city, having called it home since 2014, and he channels that passion into making a difference for every resident. As a councilman, he's known for his focus on bridging generational gaps in the community. He serves as the city liaison for the Sugar Hill Youth Council, making sure young voices are heard while simultaneously being a strong advocate for the wisdom and wellbeing of our seniors. Beyond his civic duties, Alvin brings over two decades of professional experience from his career at AT&amp;T as a network operations manager, giving him a sharp problem solving mindset he uses to build a stronger, more inclusive Sugar Hill. Today, we're going to hear his story and explore his take on everything from living better and working smarter to the power of mentoring and using systems effectively. So, Alvin, did I miss anything about you?
Wow, man. Where'd you get that bio? Man, that makes me sound like a rock star.
Well, you are, you are. So tell us, who are you and how did you end up as my neighbor?
Wow, good story, man. And you guys are great neighbors to have. So as you've mentioned, I'm Alvin and I yell from the great state of Virginia, where I'm originally from Richmond, Virginia. Born there, lived a great portion of my life in Richmond. Grew up in the inner city of Richmond, Virginia, and did my schooling and everything there.
What was life like for you there?
Wow, yeah. So as I mentioned, I grew up in inner city. I was born to a single mom, teenage mom, raised mostly from my grandmother. And again, living with my grandmother for majority of my life and living in government, subsidized type living at the time when I was living with her. And I couldn't say that it was rough because that's all that I knew. That was my life. So I mean, it wasn't rough. It was just, just my life. And so again, there were a lot of things that I would say now was probably somewhat of a challenge, but at that time it was, it was just the norm for me. And so just really not having the father figure in the home and a lot of things that was a big part of what I feel are important pieces of that. I think that those things shaped me to the person of where I am today. But again, it was somewhat of a struggle, but again, it wasn't, it wasn't bad.
Yeah. How much of your life is in that, that type of situation in that inner city?
My entire life.
Till what, what age?
Yeah, so I left, I left, so born in 74, I left Virginia in 96 to move, to move to where I'm, to where I'm living now in Georgia, or the metro area of Georgia. Immediately moved to Sugar Hill. But so yeah, so a big portion of my life through 96 was in Virginia.
Okay, so 96 to today, you've been in Georgia.
Yep. Next year will be 30 years.
Okay, wow. So what was, what was the catalyst for the move?
Honestly, Jason, that's a great question. I didn't really know what to expect. I had a cousin that had immediately, once he was done with college, he, him and his roommate moved to Georgia for just an opportunity with the job that he had landed. And again, I didn't really have a path. I didn't really have any direction as far as what I wanted to do or from a, from a job or just really a goal. And so he offered me the opportunity to, to come and this visit and potentially stay with him to just really see what opportunities was yelled to me here. And so I just packed up my car and put whatever I could fit in my car and I drove down here and I started my life living with him for a little bit.
Wow. So that was a pretty big leap of faith there. Did it feel like that at the time or was it like an adventure?
Oh, man, it was a little bit of all of that. It was a leap of faith, a leap of hope. And you know, again, as I mentioned, I didn't have a, a good job or anything. And so again, financially, just didn't really know how I was going to make it, how I was gonna, you know, fuel my automobile and do all of those things. And my grandmother was a very instrumental piece in that transition. She was very inspirational and pushing me to actually go. And then my cousin that was living here, he was really helpful and instrumental as well to really kind of get me on that path. So I would say definitely it was, it was a leap of faith for sure. And again, I think my faith was a big part of what actually pushed me to make that jump. And a lot of prayers for my grandmother during the time that I was transitioning.
Well, tell us more about that, that foundational faith.
Wow, man. So I think that is really what got me through the time that I was in Virginia and has got me through the last 29 to 30 years of the time that I had been here. So again, as I've mentioned, my grandmother raised me when, throughout, throughout my life and she was, I think the really only thing that she really had or known was her faith. And, and, and so she was in church, just like I said, she's in church six days out of the week. And a lot of times she had me at church with her, whether it was Bible study or choir rehearsal, or, or just, you know, different, different types of meetings, I was always at church. And then of course, on Sundays. So my, that's really all that I knew because again, that's all that I seen. I always share the story when I've talked to people that there would never be times where I would wake up in the early hours of the morning because I hear some noise and I would get up and I would hear my, my grandmother, you know, in the living room, on the sofa on her knees or in a closet. And she was praying and I always used to hear her praying for me all the time. She was always praying for me. She was praying for her church members. She was praying for our family. And that's something that I would think I will always remember, but that was something that was very instrumental to me because I think it was the important piece of, of that foundation, as what you mentioned, that really shaped me to the person that I am today, but also driving my faith. And so, and when I transitioned here to Georgia, every single day that she would call me, and I mean, every single day she would call me, when we ended the conversation, she would always say, ended the call with, I'll be praying for you. And that's something that I always remember.
Now, if your cousin hadn't invited you to come here, do you think you would have left?
I don't think I would have. I don't think I would have. Again, I think I probably one of the people that, you know, was born somewhere and ended up just figuring it out. And what I have a lot of friends and a lot of people that I have, you know, was brought up with that's still there in that same area or really in that. So I don't think without that opportunity that he gave to me, I wouldn't probably have left.
Yeah. So what do you think about that, just the dynamic of intervention where somebody plays a part in really changing the trajectory of somebody else's life?
Well, yes. Yeah, I think that is super. I think that everybody is placed into your path or, or your life for a reason, whether it's, you know, a positive or a negative interaction. I think that that's there intentionally for us to learn from or from us, or for us to grow from it. So that divine intervention is super important to understand of where and what's next for us and really learning from those opportunities when they're presented to us.
Yeah. So you came to Atlanta, what did you say, 1996?
Mm-hmm, during the Olympics.
Were you like one of the athletes? What's, what's, what's going on here?
I get that a lot. I get that a lot. But I said, what do you, I came here during the Olympics. They're like, were you part of the Olympics? No, I wasn't. No, it was just the timing of it. It was a perfect timing. You know, you seen the city at this, it is a really optimal point where again, it was the, the growth part of it and build and everybody was visiting and here. So it was really a great time to be here because we seen the city at its highest and you've seen a lot of just tourists and the games and all of that. So it was a, it was a really great transition point. And it's always good for me to remember, remember the date of when I moved here because of course I have the Olympics.
You don't have to, you remember that more easily than your, your anniversary.
Absolutely. You're probably right.
So did you actually get a chance to, to go to any of the Olympic events?
I did not, no. I mean, again, I was just trying to figure out where I was going and how I was gonna eat.
Yeah. What part of town were you, did you start in?
Union City.
Okay.
Yeah. So I was on the south side by the airport. It's where my cousin was living at the time and I spent probably a little year with him down in Union City.
Okay. And then where did you go after that?
Union City. I landed a job in Gwinnett County. It was actually got me up to Gwinnett in Lawrenceville. And so I was commuting from Union City to Lawrenceville every day. That was somewhat of a drive in. And so after that, I ended up moving up to Gwinnett Duluth, which actually was my next move, where I was able to eventually get, get my own place and, and start my, start my life in Duluth.
Okay. So, so yeah, I moved to Atlanta in 2005 and like you, made a big leap of faith from Arizona to here. So it was a big change and I can understand just how difficult, like leaving everything and everyone you know to go to a new world and a new environment and trying to, to make it work. How did, how did, how did you kind of figure out the vocational pathway? Did you, did you go to college? Did you skip college? Did you do something else? How did that play out?
Yeah. So I did. I started college when I was in Virginia, once I graduated from high school. And so I started that. I did not finish college. And so just again, just with that, that path of where I was and didn't really have that, those, those motivators and mentoring behind me to kind of push me in that direction. So again, I, I just left college and just started to pursue life from that point. So again, I started looking for work. It was just really just kind of looking for a job, right? I wasn't looking for a career. I was, I was just looking for work to be able to just, to provide financially. And so that was just really the path from there. And then of course, I started to understand that education was going to be a big piece to kind of help catapult me to what I would think would be next. And so those were directions that I started to take, taking some, some classes and different things like that while I, while I was here.
Okay. And at some point, probably around the year I moved here, you got connected with AT&amp;T?
I did. At the time, yeah, about the time, actually it's 22 years this year. But at the time it was Bell South. So I started, I started with Bell South and of course there was mergers later in the future. But I started out in, in what was a field technician, where I was the person that would actually come to your home when you had an issue at your, at your home. And so I started out there and-
Like that, there was still dial-up back then, right?
Oh, it was dial-up, right? Yes. There was some dial-up and there was a lot of, there was home phones at the time, right? Where, you know, people actually had a phone that they use. And so those are things that we were, you know, there was copper lines and all of those types of things as we was transitioning now to fiber. But yeah, so that's where I started my path and my journey with AT&amp;T 22 years ago now, actually, this year.
And did you meet a woman along the way?
Oh, wow. I sure did. I did. I, the time I was here and actually working in Bell South, it was, went through, just working and ran across Tawana, who's my current wife now. She was, she was at a gym. We actually met at a gym, oddly enough. I was working out and she was there. At the time, she was playing professional basketball and she was here in the off season. We met and just kind of just started playing basketball together and just kind of started the path from, from there.
Yeah, yeah. So, and then kids that had the family unfold from there?
Yeah. So, so I have an older daughter from a previous relationship, Kirsten, who she's 26 years old right now and actually oddly enough, works here at AT&amp;T with me. She doesn't work for me, but she works here with me. And so she started here once she did her undergrad at, from the University of Georgia. So she's now been here at AT&amp;T. She graduated Georgia in 22. So now she's been here for the last three and a half years. And so she's now pursuing her master's at Georgia Tech. And so she's doing very well. And then Tawana and I, we had our son Jace, who's now 12 years old, who's a sixth grader in Edlin Air Middle School right now.
Okay. Now, what, like what else, you know, between when you moved here to today, is there any other highlights that are worth kind of pulling out and sharing with people that shaped who you've become as a person?
Wow. I think I've gone through a, a list of just find, finding myself through that time, you know, from the time that I moved here to now. Of course, my grandmother, you know, passed away and I think she was a really big inspiration, number one, for, for my move and getting me to where I am today, but also shaping me in, to the person that I am today. I feel she has been, was a really big motivator for me and probably the biggest advocate for me, I would say. And so I think that going through from that to just really finding a church home that I found was a really big piece of cementing my foundation from back in Virginia, what my grandmother put there, to finding a church home here that I resonated with and, and, and then just building a community was something that I felt has been super important to kind of getting me to, from, you know, when I moved here 29 years ago to, to today.
Yeah. And so, I mean, the two lives, the two kind of lives seem to be pretty different, dramatically speaking. The life you lived and grew up and then the life you kind of intentionally shaped, right? As an adult, you could make choices in different ways. So how, how do you explain that, like move going, coming from one place and kind of creating another type of place?
I think it has been definitely a power that is so much higher than, than myself, right? And again, I'm probably gonna, you're probably gonna hear me go back to my faith and, and just really, you know, just being raised in church and my belief in God and all of that. And so I think where I could have easily, like you mentioned, you know, if I didn't have my cousin to kind of help me move to Georgia, I could have easily been where I, where I grew up and just kind of just not amounted to anything. But I feel that having my faith and having just the drivers of people believing in me, right? You know, again, and just pushing me to where they say that they see something in me and just driving me through, you know, just motivated me to just kind of come to where I am today.
Yeah, yeah. It does, are any of the experiences that you had when you were younger, did they, did they shape kind of a, a fuel or create a fuel, like a motivation to create something better? Is that part of it for you?
Absolutely. Yeah. You know, my, my mom, who I've since moved from Virginia here with me, she's living here in Georgia now. One of the things she asked me, and she asked me a lot, she was like, hey, how are you such a great dad, right? And I know that's just a mom just talking to her son or whatever, but she said, how are you such a great dad? And I say that it's because I want to make sure that my kids have something that I did not have. And so that is, I think, a really big motivator for me. And kind of that comparison is looking at things that, you know, because easily I, I could model things that I didn't have in my life and, and allow that to continue on as far as, you know, looking at it from a generational thing or however we look at it. But again, those are things that I felt that I didn't want to, I didn't want to allow my kids to experience, right? You know, and I'm really big on not making excuses either, right? And so I'm, I'm really a big, you know, figure it, figure it out and make a way. And so I think that, you know, though I didn't have a lot of things growing up, although I didn't have probably a lot of things, what people may find to be luxuries or different things, I, I didn't make excuses then. And so I think that shaped me to be where I don't make excuses now and I don't allow my kids to do that either.
Yeah. Is that a personality thing or something you embraced, a value that you embraced and took hold of?
Yeah, I think it's more of a value that I've embraced. You know, I think that I have grown a lot and not just through, you know, I mean, again, I feel that education is super important. I think a lot of my education and my knowledge has come through life lessons. And so I think that it has been something that I have just, you know, that has just shaped me, that I've gone through and just learned as opposed to being more of something that is within me.
Yeah. Talk to us about that generational piece because I think people maybe underestimate how difficult it is to change generational patterns. I mean, we inherit a lot of good things from our parents and grandparents and so on, but we also inherit a lot of disadvantages and brokenness. And to kind of correct that piece of it, it's, it takes a lot of, it's very difficult. It's like swimming upstream in a lot of ways. What, what would you say about that?
Well, yeah, I think that you have to first off acknowledge that you do not want to allow those generational things, whether you look at it to be, I would say a negative, not to continue, whether it's through things, through alcoholism or drug abuse or, or just, you know, it could be something where you have been raised your entire life by hearing your parents use swear words or just raise their voice or, or there's different things where you, it may not, it may have impacted you away and then you become accustomed to it. So you normalized it. But again, I think those are things that I feel that are, have just more subtle generational things. But I think that you have to identify that that didn't work well for you.
Yeah.
And be willing to figure out how you are going to stop it. And a lot of times it's not easy, right? And, and it's going to require, require work and, and intentionality of driving some, some of the things that's going to help you shape away from that. So that way you, number one, most importantly, and you have to do it for yourself, right? You know, again, in order for you to, to allow that advantage to, or that disadvantage or that generational thing to stop it, you, first off, you have to acknowledge it and stop it there as opposed to trying to look at what you're going to make better for your, for your, for your kids and so forth.
Yeah. And then where does city councilman come into play here?
I have no clue. I don't know. I never thought that a guy that was raised in, you know, Essex Village, public housing in Richmond, Virginia would actually how, you know, be elected into a city council seat in the city of Sugar Hill. I never would have imagined it, but again, it wasn't my, it wasn't my vision, right? It was, it was something, again, as I'm going back to, to, to kind of my, my faith in, in God. But I would have never thought that I would have been a politician, right? There was not anything that if somebody had asked me when I had to speak about what I wanted to be when I grew up, it was never a politician, right? It could have been a police officer. My biggest thing, I wanted to be an engineer. So, but I think once I moved to Sugar Hill in, in 2014, I, you know, I was really community focused and that was a big piece of where I found to be making an impact. And so I was always looking at how I can get involved at a community level. That was at PTA meetings, you know, again, being, you know, being the room dad for my kids' schools. That was something I was super, you know, instrumental in, involvement in my kids' schools. And just doing things within the community in the betterment and in the support for others, right? And so that's really what was a big part for me is how can I help and support others? And that's something that I, I teach and I've talked to my daughter when she was younger and to my son now is, is what can you do for others as opposed to putting things for yourself? And so that was a big piece of really what catapulted me to, to the city council seat is there was an open seat. I actually had a neighbor who, who was just elected and he left the county, which actually left his seat vacant. And I had a friend reach out and it was like, I feel that you would be a great contribution to the council. And I was like, I don't know about that. I thought about it and prayed on it and talked to some friends and here I am today.
Yeah. So let's, let's talk about, you know, you've gone through all of these experiences and here you are today. You're what, 51 now?
51. Man, you know so much about me. Wow. Yes, I am 51.
So you've, you've lived a half century. You've got quite a bit of wisdom. So what's kind of, when you think back at your story, you know, when you think about living better, you know, what does that mean to you?
Oh, man. I think for some, right, we could, we could look at living better being about health and wellbeing and for others, it could be about financial stability or stronger relationships, in which I think that that is super important or simply just having peace of mind, you know, but really at its core, I think that it means making choices that align with, with my values and, and improving quality of life. And I think that is, to me, what I feel is living better, right? It's just big, you know, just really aligning with my values and, and, and just allowing that to just kind of seep through and, and make sure that others are feeling that.
Yeah. What would you say to someone who is living in contradiction to their values? They're out of alignment. What advice would you give them?
Wow. Self-evaluate, right? Just self-evaluate with yourself and, and talk to someone, right? Go, go sit down and have a conversation with, with a friend or someone that, I think that is a big piece of something where I have found a lot of times is if I find myself getting out of alignment, have a conversation with, and it necessarily have to be a friend, right? Someone, sometimes that you may not align with personally to, to allow you to kind of help shape some understandings or miscon, you know, misunderstandings of where you are and then kind of directionally kind of get you back on the path.
Yeah. I think one other dynamic that you might be able to speak to has to do with, sometimes we're out of alignment because there's external pressures that are pushing us. Like we wouldn't necessarily choose that, but we're being pressed upon by a boss or in your case, you know, if you're on the city council, so you might have the community, the part of the population that's pushing you to go a certain direction when that might be. So what would you say about kind of sticking true to those values even when there is that pressure from others to be in a, in a misalignment, if that makes sense?
Well, yeah, that definitely makes a lot of sense, right? I think the biggest piece, you know, and really is, you really hit it on the head from, from politics, right? You get pulled in so many directions, right? You have, you know, if you look at it at the federal level, state level and all that, you have your parties and you have a lot of misunderstandings and a lot of, you know, and again, when you're looking at doing what's right, right? That's really where I'm at as far, as far as, you know, what's right. It doesn't matter a party. It doesn't matter age or race or religion or any of those things. And so it's just really understanding that we may think different in certain, in certain things, thinking to myself, I may not necessarily agree with it. I may not necessarily align with that. We are all not going to align with that. I get a lot of emails and a lot of requests and a lot of things from, from residents or community members or whatever that it takes a lot of thought before I respond.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, I guess, talk to us more about that idea of cognitive empathy, the idea of sort of setting your own thoughts, beliefs to the side and seeing it through their eyes, not because you have to agree or endorse what they're doing, but just to understand it so that you can communicate and perhaps come to a solution as well.
Yeah. I mean, I think in a selfish way, when you allow that, you, yourself to put your thoughts and things aside to listen, I think that allows you to grow, right? It allows you to learn more as well, right? There's instances where we look at a religion that may not necessarily be our own, or we look at a race that may not necessarily be our own, and we have these thoughts and these things that we, that we don't understand and we make these judgments. But if you take the opportunity to set your thing aside and to listen to the other person, then that allows you to grow and to understand a lot of matters. So I think that is a really big piece of it is that looking at it from a selfish approach is what can I get from it? What can I learn from being quiet, right? Just be quiet and just listen. I think that has been an approach that I, that I've seen that I have been taking.
Yeah. On the work side, what do you think about when you hear the word or the phrase "working smarter"? What does working smarter mean to you?
Oh, man. So I, you know, I lead an amazing team here at AT&amp;T and I have generations from Gen Zers all the way up to baby boomers and, you know, folk, you know, teams that's in Europe and domestic and internationally. And so I, you know, working smarter to me as a work from, from a private sector to, you know, to, to an elected official role is just really aligning effort with strategy, right? How can, how can I align the effort to strategy, right? And then for me also is being able to articulate that across all of the generational breakouts that I have within my team, right? So I have to be very intentional with understanding that I have boomers and I have Gen Zers and all that within my team. So everybody may not hear, or may not receive certain things that I'm saying the same way, right? And so, and so again, I think so, you know, so many of us, especially older age and, you know, I mean, I'm a half century as you've already, you know, said it, right? Uh, you know, it's, you know, so instead of just, you know, I think we've always known, we gotta get out here and we gotta work hard, right? You get out here, you just gotta work hard, you gotta work hard, you gotta work hard. You know, it's just, so instead of just working hard, uh, make decisions that moves us closer to the goals uh, with less wasted time, right? And so just figuring out with that dynamic and, 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 and kind of work. So to me, that is really working smarter is, is just really um, the effort to strategy ratio.
Yeah. And does any of that apply towards the uh, the political side of things when you think about those ideas and principles?
Oh man, yeah. I, I think that it has to definitely, it definitely works on the, on the political side because um, you're, you're, you're under a microscope, right? You know, I mean, I think, you know, it, you look at um, every person, right? They, everybody is, is gifted with uh, uh, the opportunity to vote, right? Everybody gets that one vote. Um, and everybody that voted for you, they're holding you to that one vote, right? And so they're like, hey, I voted for you, so my expectations. And so again, it's just really looking at, you have to work for everyone, right? And again, right, you get, you know, we're, we're serving under four-year terms and, and again, four years may sound like a lot, but four years, sometimes it's not a lot to get things and make things done or make things happen.
Yeah.
And so it's just really, you know, working through, okay, I understand that here is my goals, here is my vision. But again, you, you're, you've been elected by, by uh, by our community and, 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 you know, and so again, there are, there are goals and expectations and visions from, from them as well, right? And so a lot of times, you know, the, the residents and the people wants, you know, and again, in a selfish way, but also understandingly, everybody wants what's best for them, right? Everybody's looking at, you know, what, how this impacts me or how is this going to benefit me? As a council member and as an elected official, we have to understand what is going to benefit um, the future generations, right? And, and all of that. So again, I could say, yes, I don't want this or yes, I like this. But is this going to be the best decision that I make that's going to be best for um, the, the generations? That being my, my grandkids and, and their kids, um, you know, in the future, if they're still happen to live here in Sugar Hill. So I think that allowing um, myself as well as my colleagues, right? Because it has to be a collective, right? So again, figuring out how to work um, not just smarter, but how to work together smarter uh, is a piece that I think will, you know, uh, is super important.
Yeah. So your grandmother was a strong influence in your life and a mentor in many ways. So when you think about mentoring, you know, how, how do you think about that? And how does that play a role in how you live your life?
Yeah. Uh, mentoring is a big piece to me. Goes back to, you know, the analogy that I use with my kids and me being a father of, of things that, you know, that I felt probably was missing from my life or from my, from my growing up. And I think mentoring was a big piece of that. And, you know, there could be mentoring or influence, right? You know, it could be influence from different sides. Um, and I think that uh, one of the things of what, why I'm so passionate about mentoring is that I love for uh, our youth to have inspiration that they can put their hands on. A, a, a lot of times our youth um, see um, those that are on TV or our sports star, our stars, or our, our musicians or now our, you know, YouTubers and social media influencers and all of that. But again, uh, you know, there are a lot of people that is right within their neighborhoods or right within their schools or right within uh, their own community that are, are really uh, inspirational people. And so I think that mentoring allow uh, people like myself and you and a lot of people that we have right here within our community to be able to be those uh inspirations to just give someone a notice. There was a study um, that I read that actually was um, Gwinnett Church. When I first started um, mentoring with the youth in Gwinnett Church, uh, it talked about how when kids go off to college, that they're more, the, the stats, statistics show that they're more in tune to listen to someone outside of their family than they would their own family members, right? And so uh, and then, you know, their parents could be telling them the exact same thing that someone on the outside may be telling them, but they're more in tune to, to actually listen to that person than they would to their other parents. And so I think that having um, you know, going back to the saying where it takes the village, right? Having that village or having that person to be um, just a, a voice or an inspiration, but also just being an ear, um, is super important to just the growth uh, of, of our youth. And that's, you know, the reason why I'm, I'm super uh, super big on mentoring.
Yeah, it's um, that's actually one of the reasons why we're involved in Gwinnett Church. Is because of all the programs that they have with, you know, I knew I wanted to um, get my kids around people that are going to tell them things that I would like to tell them, but they won't listen to me. So uh, so it's, it's just the mature, the maturing process, you know? That's how, when we were in middle school, high school, we listened to peers and other adults more than we want to listen to our own parents. So.
Yep, yep. One hundred percent. One hundred percent.
So talk to us about stories, narratives. How have stories, fictional or real, shaped you as a person? You know, any particular books or movies or just ideas, uh, your narrative ideas that have kind of shaped who you've become or that you really resonated or have helped you through some tough times?
Well, someone big non-fictional reader.
Yeah.
And, you know, but I, I think that um, real and fictional kind of has been like mirrors and windows for me, right? You know, uh, uh, you know, I mean, I think the real kind of showed me what's possible, right? You know, kind of looking at it in, in, in that, in that, in that aspect. And also it kind of keeps me grounded in reality, right? You know, and I think that, you know, from a fictional side, I've, you know, it, it really pushes me to imagine. And that's something that I, you know, as a kid, I just didn't have this very vivid imagination. But I think the fictional uh, pushes me to imagine beyond what I know, right? And it's kind of helped uh, me to empathize, right? With perspectives that I may not have, you know, lived myself. And, and there was a lot that I haven't lived myself. So I think that the, the difference is like, I've kind of put it with like, one's a mirror, right? And then the window, you know, analogy. And so um, but yeah, I, I was thinking that was kind of, you know, I'm, my, probably the, my most favorite book uh, it's, it's called The Power of Your Subcon, Your Subconscious Mind. It was a book that I probably read, you know, at least a couple of times a year and been reading for several years. And, and just really speaking about, you know, um, what you, you know, in a sense, there's so many books that has similarities. But just really what's on your mind, what you think about, what you say, um, is actually what comes.
The story you tell yourself.
The story you tell yourself, one hundred percent.
Yeah. Now, what about systems? I mean, as an operational person at AT&amp;T, you must be a systems uh, you know, engulfed in systems. Talk to us about how you think about systems and, and how they play a part in your life.
Oh man, yeah. So there's a lot of systems and there's a lot of um, systems that work and probably a lot of systems that don't work. I think a good system brings consistency, right? And, you know, and uh, but also efficiencies and clarity. And so leading a team and all of that, right? Those are things that, you know, you kind of look at in comparison to what systems and how that, and what that looks like, right? You know, it helps people to focus. I think a good system helps you to focus on what really matters instead of really reinventing the wheel, right? And so I'm really big on, you know, if, if it's already been done, right, you know, why, why redo it, right? And so um, so I, I think it allows uh, individuals as, you know, allows myself uh, to focus on things that really matter. So um, uh, again, uh, those are things that I really drive um, drive my team to kind of really look at. Is that I'm not expecting you to come in here and create a patent, not patented idea. But just kind, you know, if something that we have there, how can we make it better?
Yeah. I guess one of the interesting things that comes to mind when you say all that is, I think about like uh, a nuclear power plant, you know, they have to create the, the ingredients to run the plant and it creates a lot of waste. So the system itself does what it's supposed to, which is to create, they create this material and then they burn the material or run the material in the, in the reactor and then it creates this waste. But the waste is now this consequence of the system. And I think a lot of times we kind of think about the benefits of the system, but we tend to kind of miss or be blinded to the consequences of the system. Talk to us about that.
Wow, man. I mean, he gonna have to write that down for me. I love that. I mean, that, wow, that is, that, I think that is a um, that is a really great way of really saying, uh, I think that we don't look at some of the life lessons that we get from failures, right? Or things that just doesn't, you know, that did not work well for us. And, you know, that's something that I've, you know, again, always having constant conversations with my son, right? But again, you know, just through a system and we can look at various things throughout how we navigate through. But, you know, a system looking at a way of how we process things. And then again, through that way of how we're processing it, there may be fallout from it. And so uh, but not being afraid to um, uh, fail, which actually that waste piece of it, not being afraid to fail. And then being, being able to take that failure and learn from it. So um, wow, I love the analogy of the uh, the nuclear, nuclear process.
So when, when does this, you talked about a broken system. So what is a, what, what is a system that's broken and, and, and um, why, why do we keep using broken systems?
Um, wow, it's a great question. I think that we keep using it because we don't really know how to go about not changing it, right? You know, I think, you know, I look at and it's something I tell my team all the time. Just because we've been doing something a certain way, don't mean that we have to continue to keep doing it that way. And so I think that we look at um, just how things have been going and we look at, you know, okay, well, it's been working or it's not been working, but I'm not going to be the one to change it. I'm not smart enough to change it. I don't feel that I would add enough value in order for me to be able to go in here and change this system. So I think that um, it has a lot to do with uh, us feeling that uh, of inability. But also just not uh, looking at uh, taking a chance to be able to go in there and make that uh, make that change.
Yeah. So if you could go back to your younger self up in uh, Virginia, what would you, what would you tell them?
The future's bright. The future's bright. I uh, I wouldn't have never imagined um, that, you know, again, I would, I would be where I am today. And, and I feel that I'm very blessed and I'm very fortunate. Um, and again, you know, we can define that in so many different ways. But I, I would say that uh, don't give up, right? There's a lot of times where I felt that um, that the, there, there wasn't any hope uh, for me. I, I, I felt that um, I didn't really have a path or a vision, again, as I think I've mentioned that. And so um, that to just really ensure, just don't give up.
Yeah. And, and so you're, you're bringing up two words, despair and hope. Talk to us about those.
We look at despair, or I looked at despair and really didn't understand at the, during my growing up, really what that, what that was about and what I was actually going through. But also I didn't really understand the hope component to that either, right? I just really just went through life. Uh, and then life was just lifing for me. And uh, I think that where you look at it, I think my hope was through the early morning prayers that uh, I heard my grandmother praying for me. That's where I heard the despair in her cries and when she was praying. But I think in parallel to that, I felt the hope through that, right? And I was in one bedroom and she was in the living room or she was in a closet, but I felt the hope through that. And again, at the time, I didn't understand it. It was just, you know, but now I feel the power in it. And uh, I think that has, you know, was a super important piece to just that foundation and, and just kind of that starts comparison between despair and hope.
Okay. What additional words of wisdom do you have to share?
Man, uh, I, I, words of wisdom. I don't know if I'm, I got into wisdom, honestly, but um, you know, I, I think that, you know, we, we've touched on my life in, in regards to, you know, just really my growing up and really what, what got me to where I am today and, and really me sitting here and um, uh, on city council. And having the opportunity to sit here on this podcast is a great experience for me. But really looking at it and just utilizing this platform to just allow people to understand that um, we have um, a lot of power um, and something that I, I had mentioned. And that's our, our ability and our privilege to vote. And um, that is something where, you know, a lot of people from the state, you know, the federal to the state, to the, to the local levels, that where um, sometimes we, we don't take advantage of that, um, of that opportunity that's been afforded to us. And so um, that is something that uh, I would say um, you know, whether it's a, a friend or a loved one, is just educating on how important it is to actually vote and, and, you know, just really exercising that, 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 that privilege.
Yeah. What would you say to the cynic that's like, well, does it really even matter?
Oh, you know, I, I, I would challenge that person to also be quiet um, after the vote has been done of things that they feel is not going their way, right? Because I think that um, there are a lot of people that will voice um, you know, if my vote doesn't matter, but they're probably the loudest upon an election or on a candidate being elected of how things aren't going or how things are going. Every vote matters. We've seen that through so many different levels of elections where it comes down to double-digit numbers or single-digit numbers. And so don't complain about something if you're not willing to, to get out there and, and do something and you have the opportunity to do something, especially in a, in an elected voting opportunity.
Yeah. Now, there is some kind of election coming up here. Tell me about this.
Yeah. So we do, we have uh, in the city of Sugar Hill, we have a, any, a local election, a municipal election uh, for um, three uh, seats. We have the mayor's seat uh, and we have uh, two city council seats, post four and post five. The early voting for those starts on uh, next Tuesday. As a matter of fact, uh, the fourteenth of October. And the actual, and it goes uh, through Friday for the, for two weeks. And then we have uh, the actual general, the election, which would be on November fourth from seven to seven at the city of Sugar Hill City Hall. Um, a very important uh, race. Just because it's a local election. Um, and again, um, I think so many people is unaware of such a low turnout at local elections. And so it is super important to get the word out, uh, to spread the word and educate on, 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 um, on getting out and voting.
Why should someone throw their hat in the ring for you?
I, I love my city and I've come to love uh, the city of Sugar Hill um, a lot, right? As you've read in my bio, I have a really big passion for youth. And I have a really big passion for the elderly or our seniors within our community and fellow, because of my grandmother, right? And so I, um, I have two ends of what I have a really deep passion for. And this seat now, I have the opportunity to, to look at those two passions I have and work on the middle, right? And you look at it and you hear these motivational speakers, speakers, they talk about going to a cemetery and reading gravestones. And they talk about reading when this person was born and when they died, right? And that most important piece is the middle, right? And that dash, right, is kind of how I, how I identify as. And so you look at the youth and the elderly of my passions, but also I have the opportunity and the ability that I have to make sure that I am uh, advocating for everyone in the middle of that as well. Oh, I feel that the annexations and the zoning and the ordinances are super important and I, and I take that importantly as well. The biggest piece to me are the people within the community. And so that is really my biggest drivers. I, you know, our parks and our green space and, you know, our, our business and, you know, small business and all of those, those things are super important and those are things that I will work with my colleagues and my mayor and all of those things to push. But really where I look at the value and what value I bring is how do I advocate for every person in the city, right? You know, old, young, uh, to all different walks and making sure that I am that voice for everyone, right? So partnering with our schools, um, having a really great relationship with our schools, partnering with our churches. We have a really, really great um, uh, dynamic with our choo, our schools, our churches and uh, and our, and our local government, you know, local governments where we building that community um, for everyone. So I would say that that was probably the biggest driver to, to kind of advocate for myself if I had to.
Yeah. So what, um, I mean, what is, help someone understand, like, what are the things that a city council person has authority over? And has influence on in, in that position that they're taking on?
Right. So, you know, as I mentioned, you know, there's a, you know, from a growth perspective, right? You know, there is five council members and, and there is a, you know, there's a vote for various things that, that we have and. And so there are, there is growth opportunities with, whether it's neighborhoods or businesses and, you know, and so we have the, the overseeing of that. We also elect or select for our various boards and committees that we have, our, you know, downtown development authority, our historic preservation society, our riverlands authority. We, we select people that we feel will be great candidates to sit in those seats that help in, in the, the dynamic and the shape of, of our city as well as working alongside and supporting our mayor and, and his vision for, for the city as well. But in addition to that, is also advocating for, for the community, right? And so we have about 20, 60, 27,000 residents within the city of Sugar Hill. So just ensuring that we build a community that is sustainable for, for everyone. And so I think that understanding what does that look like for not just for me or my family, but for everyone as a whole.
Yeah. So this is a four-year term. So in, and you've, you've served four years already, right?
That's correct.
So at the end of this next four years, when you look back at these four years for your second term, what's the story you want to be able to tell? And what are the things that you want to be able to say that you accomplished during this window of time?
I want to be able to say that we have a strong community that where my kids, your kids will, when they're ready to go off to college and done with college, that this community is strong enough, safe enough for them to want to come back to, to plant roots and to start their families. I want this community to be where, at, at the end of my four years, where I drive through our city and I can see our seniors and our elders having the opportunity to walk through our downtown areas and to walk through and, and just to go shop or just to go out. And, and so I think that building a, a community where, at some point where residents are ready to downsize from their homes or where they're living now and that they love this community so much that they want to stay here. But there is a, there is a, a place for them to actually be able to reside here and within the city limits or within the city of Sugar Hill without them having to have that, you know, four or five bedroom, two-story home that they, that they had when their kids were, were there. So now they're in a, in a community where they're able to live and at some point their kids are probably somewhere within the community with them.
Yeah. And what, you know, so there, there's a lot of cities in Georgia. What, why, why should people come to Sugar Hill? What makes that so awesome?
Man, I mean, the name itself, man, it's Sugar Hill. I mean, the Sugar Hill gang.
Full of sugar, you can't get any better than that.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I think that there are a lot of great cities here and we sit right in the middle of, of two good cities, great cities, right? Sugar Hill, I mean, I'm sorry, Swanee and Buford. But I think where Sugar Hill offers its advantage to me is that though, as I've mentioned, our, our breakout as far as, you know, population of where we have, we still have a small town feel to where we are, right? We have a community where you have a very unique dynamic of, of our, 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 you know, I, I hear this through our administrators within our schools of saying that, you know, there are so many people asking, how does the city of Sugar Hill make it work? Where our churches, our schools and our government all work together for the better of our kids, number one, but then ultimately for, for our residents. And so that, you know, for those that have kids, we have great schools right here within our city limits. From three elementary, you know, schools to, to a middle school and a high school with all within our city limits that are amazing schools, but we also have a North Gwinnett, that actually also, you know, residents actually goes to the North Gwinnett district as well. And so I think that we have that small town feel, we have great schools, we have an amazing mayor. I mean, why would you want to go move anywhere else?
Yeah, yeah. How can people connect with you if they're interested in reaching out?
So you can find me on Facebook. You know, I, I have a personal account, Alvin Hicks, and I accept all of, all of their Facebook requests. I do have an Alvin for city, for city of Sugar Hill City Council post four page as well. I am pretty active on my Facebook page and, and, you know, usually I'm posting a lot of things with that. Either I'm doing in the community or for the community or with the community on that page. I do have contact, I do have a city, an Alvin Hicks at City of Sugar Hill email address and that you can email me at as well. But I'm also, you can contact me and my, my personal information is all on the city's website. If you needed to contact me for any questions that you may have. And trust me, there has been a lot of people that have reached out to me to want to sit down and have conversations and talk and get to know and learn more about me. So probably a lot of that now, I can probably just forward in this, this podcast and answer a lot of questions. But if not, I do enjoy those times and being able to sit down with, with just the residents.
Cool. Well, Alvin, thank you so much for sharing your life with us today.
Thanks, Jason, for the opportunity. I really appreciate it. Really had a lot of fun too.
This has been an episode of the Share Life Podcast and we'll see you on the next one.